Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to Ethos Town Hall webinar for the month of May. My name is Tina Robertson and I'm a licensed clinical social worker, a mental health therapist and trainer, and I'm also part of Ethos Village. So I want to tell you a bit about Ethos because it is a vital resource for our community and you should know about it. So Ethos's mission is to engage, educate, and equip students and student athletes to become our future leaders. And so while they achieve that goal in multiple ways, one of the primary tools that Ethos uses is the Legacy Plan. And the Legacy Plan is a curriculum that focuses on helping students connect to and feel confident in their identity, learning their purpose, living by their core values, and creating a vision and goals that outlines the path for their desire of future. And so you heard me mention the village. Ethos Village is the support arm of the organization that is inspired by the African proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child." So it definitely takes all of us to get to where we need to be. And speaking of Ethos Village, you can actually join the village by clicking on ethosvillage.com. And then if you want to learn a little bit more about Ethos's programs, visit their website ethoseducationgroup.org. And then I have to definitely shout out Ethos's visionary president and CEO, Michael Davis, as well as the Ethos co-founders, Everson Walls and Hall of Famer Tim Brown. So y'all, I'm super excited to facilitate this conversation tonight around this topic of mental health and how it's transitioned during the pandemic. So if you do not know by now, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And this month's, this theme this year is looking at going back to the basics. So we want to provide foundational knowledge about mental health and make sure that it's factual so that people know how to take care of their mental health during this time. And so that's exactly what you're going to get tonight in this discussion. And before I introduce this All-Star panel, one of the things that I want to do is I want to level set us for the conversation ahead because when we talk about mental health, different people have different ideas about what that is, different thoughts about it. So the first thing that's important to know about mental health is that it is part of our overall health. So it affects our physical health and our physical health affects our mental health. So when we talk about mental health, we're talking about our emotional, psychological, and social wellbeing. Mental health affects how we think, how we feel, and how we act. And it also determines how we're going to handle stress, how we show up in relationships, and how we make choices. So that's a little bit of grounding for the evening. I also want to recognize that, Mont, tonight, we are also sitting with some really difficult and tragic news that has happened in our country with another school shooting. So I want to make sure that we hold space for that tonight if you're joining in and just make sure that as you pay attention to what's going on and as you check into those spaces, that you take care of yourself and your mental health. So now we get into the good part. I want to introduce this All-Star panel. And I am super excited for the diversity of thought leadership and expertise that they're going to bring to this forum tonight. So let me start off by introducing you to Mr. Randall Ford. He's joining us tonight. He is a licensed practicing counselor associate. He's being supervised by Dr. Carol Gilmour. And he has over 22 years of experience working with youth and adults in various settings, including school, coaching, and counseling. He currently serves as the district student mentoring coordinator at Frisco ISD. He has a bachelor's from Southern University A&amp;M and a master's from Missouri Baptist University. And then next we have Mr. Jason Wooden. Jason is a student support coordinator for Frisco ISD, and he's been a counselor for 12 of those 20 years that he's spent in the education field. Mr. Wooden is also in private practice as a life coach. He attended Tennessee State University and got his bachelor's from there in education. And then went to PV A&amp;M. I know we have PV folks that always are watching the webinar. So he has his master's in counseling from Prairie University. And then also hanging out with us tonight is Mr. Aaron Taylor. Mr. Taylor is a CBS sports football analyst, Super Bowl champion, and a college football Hall of Famer who is really passionate about teamwork, really focused on building resilience and human transformation in his work. He is known as a mind and brain health advocate who enjoys bringing honesty, humor, courage, and vulnerability to everything that he does. And this is the way that he inspires others to look deeper so that they can go further. And then last but not least, holding it down for the ladies tonight, our only lady on the panel, is Melissa Riley-Zavisa. And Melissa is also a licensed clinical social worker supervisor. She spent most of her career working in a lot of settings, including state agencies, schools, and community agencies. And for about 13 years, she worked in a variety of roles at Parkland Hospital, including overseeing the Victim Intervention Program and Rape Crisis Center. I was actually very fortunate to be supervised by her. So I'm a clinical therapist because of her supervision. So I'm excited for her to be here tonight and share her expertise. She opened her private practice during the pandemic in August 2020, Riley Counseling, where she sees adolescents and adults who are struggling with anxiety, self-harm, and trauma. So that is our stellar panel for tonight. And we are ready to get this thing kicked off. And so I want to jump right in and talk about this pandemic and how mental health has evolved, just looking at the transition of it. So we know that mental health had stigma to it before the pandemic started. And then I think we started to see some shifts where people started talking about it more. But how has mental health changed during the pandemic? So I want to start off with Mr. Ford and let you talk about that a little bit in your work. How are you seeing that shift happening?
So thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. There's absolutely a huge shift going on, and it's very noticeable. And I think that's one thing that we all can speak to or can agree on is that it's, you know, it's out front now. And so the pandemic has definitely pushed it out front to where everybody is kind of seeing what's going on. And in a good sense, there are a lot of people who are seeking help. But then there are also people who are not seeking help and may be afraid or ashamed or what have you, whatever the reason may be. So I'm glad we're on this panel right now just to discuss those things. And there's just all sorts of symptoms and, you know, internalizing symptoms, external symptoms, just different things that cause people to go through different mind shifts and struggles and things like that. So if we think about a lot of factors, you know, there's been disruptions in routines. There's been disruptions in consistency, safety, security. There's a lot of doubt. There's a lot of lack of direction. There's stagnation for fear to move forward because, you know, some, if we think about kids as well as adults, that fear to move forward comes because they don't know what to expect next. So all those factors weighing in, you know, just mental health in itself is like a muscle. It's a way that things need to be exercised. It needs to be worked on, just like if you were to work out your body, you take care of your diet and all of that. You also need to take care of your mental health. So the importance of doing that is just, you know, finding someone to help you practice or go through that. Or if you are able to, you know, to, you know, kind of get a little help or do it on your own. But you have to work out, you know, those mental health muscles as well.
I love the frame that you put that in, working out those mental health muscles because that's a great visual for us that we have to really keep as we raise awareness around this conversation. We have to be doing something with it and about it, right? To help reduce that stigma. So Jason, Mr. Wooden, I know specifically since you're in schools, you and Randall, what have you seen related to this that you think is important to add to this conversation?
I've seen the good side and the bad side. For some families, that, you know, it's slowed mom and dad down. It's allowed them to have more time with the family, sitting down and just spending quality time, playing, you know, games with each other, things like that. You know, that's on the positive side, you know. People being able to just kind of be present, just be present in the moment and be present with their family. So on that side, people are getting, you know, rest and, you know, not having to be in the hustle bustle of life, taking the kids to practice and just all the ripping and running. So, you know, that's on the good side of things. And then unfortunately, on the bad side of things, you know, a lot of people have struggled. A lot of people are stuck. Just the whole stopping, you know, life and trying to figure out this new normal has been a struggle for a lot of people. The isolation has been rough. If you're tuned into the media, you don't know what to believe. So that's causing a lot of unnecessary, you know, fear and panic. And you just, you know, one minute it's this, next minute it's something else. And it's just, you know, that unknown keeps people, you know, scared and that fear is really doing something to a lot of the people, adults and kids. You know, the overall health as far as gaining weight has been a struggle for a lot of people. That pandemic weight is real.
Watch out now. Watch out.
Yeah, so, you know, that's affecting people's self-esteem. And then the depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, the tempts. COVID has done a number on us and, you know, we're still not out of it, you know. And just like, you know, Randall Ford said, or Dr. Ford, as I call him, you know, some people are getting help and some people aren't getting help. So it's just, we're starting to see the effects of what COVID. Even though we're coming out of the pandemic, we're still, you know, things are still coming to the forefront as far as problems. You know, we're just kind of dealing with them as they come.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting you said the positive side of it. And I think when you say mental health, people don't automatically think there's a positive side to it. It's usually that the mind goes to, oh, my gosh, there's, you know, this mental illness. There's, you know, the stigma part pops up. And so I really appreciate you saying that because health is really about getting to a place of overall wellbeing and that some of what happened gave us some opportunities, as you said, to be present and to really build on some of that connectivity that maybe we didn't have before because everybody was moving around. But we got a chance to truly connect, and that is a positive part of community for mental health. So I appreciate you raising that as part of the conversation. And we know all of these other pieces. The isolation leads to a lot of other mental health issues that just kind of fester. Melissa, in your private practice, and you started your practice in COVID, right? In the pandemic. And so you're seeing a lot of adolescents and young adults, actually, that have significant issues. Talk a little bit about how you've seen this mental health factor play out during this last two years or so.
Just to add on what the others have said, two things that stand out. Lots of social anxiety with my teens that I've been seeing, where they've been maybe online for a while and then going back. But lots of social anxiety and just navigating, how do I be social? They may have struggled with that before, and now it seems to be heightened. The other thing I'm hearing a lot, and at the beginning and even now, burnout among professionals and especially to the teachers. I work with a handful of teachers and I've seen some amazing teachers questioning if they can continue doing this. And so I think burnout and then grief, lots of grief. Grief of losing loved ones, grief of that routine, grief of graduation ceremonies or traditional quote-unquote graduation ceremonies. We're getting back there, but things have definitely changed. So lots of feelings coming up. So that's what I've seen.
Thank you. You know, just to zero in on the grief piece, I think that's a factor that a lot of people don't recognize when it's happening because grief doesn't always look like I'm laying on the sofa crying and can't move. Grief shows up in a lot of different ways, and anger, resentment, it shows up in different spaces. So we do see a lot of grief happening and maybe it's just not identifiable that way. Mr. Taylor, talk a little bit about what this has been like in your experience. And I know in being an athlete, I know you're still connected to that world. We've seen a lot of athletes in the last two to three years come out and talk about their own mental health issues. And I think that's amazing. I know, I think it was the Colts that had their own campaign last year around mental health. So talk a little bit about how this has shown up for you in your interactions and in your environment.
So clearly, I'm not the academia of this panel. I'm here to maybe bring the curve down a little bit. But as I shared, you know, the only thing I'm an expert in is my own experience. But I've found that that experience has value, particularly through the lens of being a former athlete and living in that world and having a lot of coaches that, you know, coached these players and friends that have kids that are now in college and in the high school ranks. And people are hurting, man. My personal feeling is like, we're coming out of the single greatest period of uncertainty we've seen globally for our generation. And there appears to be a tsunami of a mental health crisis that's rapidly starting to hit our shores. And if we don't get ourselves to higher ground, we're all going to be in trouble. So what I liked about what Dr. Ford was talking about is the analogy between maybe the sports injuries, the physical injuries of a pulled hamstring, a bulging disc, or a sprained ankle, and those invisible injuries, the ones that aren't as easy to see and aren't as easy to detect. And I always share the story, my first year in the NFL with Green Bay, I was first round draft pick, 16th player taken overall, ruptured my patella tendon on June 6th before I ever even put shoulder pads on. So year one was over before it even started. And that kicked me into a great depression of which, you know, is where I started to educate myself about all these things once I finally crashed and burned six or seven years later. But day one post-op, the doctor had me try to lift my leg. And he said, you know, I want to test where your strength is. We just, you know, repaired your patella tendon. And he said, lift it. And I couldn't. I sent the signal, but for a variety of reasons, it never made it to the leg and it couldn't move. But my why was so big. It was so hard sitting off and watching everybody enjoy themselves and play in the, literally, the plane taking off. And I'm sitting there on the tarmac like wondering, you know, when I'm ever going to be able to do it again. Like this great sadness really drove me to go into that training room and twice a day, three times a day, four times a day with focus, attention, time, effort. Focus, attention, time, effort, focus, attention, time, effort. That nine months later, not only could I lift my leg off of the table, but I was able to stop a Reggie White bull rush and block and play against some of the best athletes on the planet. I'd like to introduce that there's an analogy between our physical injuries and our emotional ones, our invisible ones. If we use the same focus and attention and time and effort for our emotional wounds, for our experiential wounds, that we can improve any situation that seems too grave. Any unhappiness we have can be lessened. It doesn't mean that things go away. But if we're willing to put in the effort, we can improve the quality of our lives. And I think that mind-body connection that we all innately have understood really is most pronounced in the world of athletics because we all know and understand what it takes to recover from physical injuries. If we can by extension overlay that to what it takes to recover from the invisible ones, maybe people might start to have some more willingness because they see a light at the end of the tunnel. And it doesn't have to be a train. It can be the light of salvation if we're willing to put in the work.
So Mr. Taylor, that was very academic. It really was. And not just academic, but inspirational. I was over here like, I don't know if there's an offering plate coming or if I should, you know, I don't know. But, but no, you spoke to, first of all, the analogy is so powerful because it's so helpful to have visuals, right? And then the other piece that you mentioned about your why being so big. And I think that's just, let's zero in on that for one second because that is such a big part of the Legacy Plan that Ethos uses to really help create these future leaders. And so when you think about your purpose, your purpose is your why. Why are you here? And when things are happening in life, it's a pillar, it's an anchor for us, right? To bring us back to the focus of our why. What is your purpose? And that can help us really be resilient through some of these mental health challenges. So and speaking of, you know, just kind of building off of that, and we talked a little bit about this visualization. So I want to just come back to you, Mr. Taylor, so you can kind of address this and then we'll spin off of it. But as we think about visualization, why is that important? Why is visualization and positive affirmation important as relates to mental health?
Man, it's one of my go-to tools that I use. It's really important for me to have a morning routine. I gotta be able to put my helmet and my shoulder pads on before I get out into the real world because the game is going on out there. And if I'm not ready, I'm gonna get ear holed, which in the football lexicon means I'm gonna get my butt whipped. And I still may get ear holed when I pray, when I meditate, when I listen to my affirmations, when I do my gratitude journal. So I don't know how my day is going to go, but it's going to go a heck of a lot better than it would have had I not done all those things. So for affirmations, for me, my problem sometimes is I listen to that voice too much, that voice of doubt, that voice of you're not good enough to love, the voice of you're not good enough to show up for, which is what, you know, happened when there was some abandonment with my dad, the sexual and physical abuse that I went through, that voice. The problem is I listen to that voice too much instead of talking to myself more. That, to me, is where the affirmations start to come in. When I call it fighting fire with fire, in my own voice, on this phone, in my voice notes, I record affirmations that speak to and for me. And it's a way to neutralize those negative thoughts and what we know from neuroplasticity and our brain's ability to be able to regenerate. The more we use thoughts and circuits, the stronger they become and the other ones start to wither away. So when I'm in the car, I got five minutes to go from here to there, I'll just hit play on my own voice. When I have a little extra pep in my step, I wait to record it and I call it fighting fire with fire. So I talk to myself more instead of listening to myself less. And there's all sorts of data and research that's shown the power of visualization. The flip side of that, and I think the thing, and I'll end with this, so I'm interested to hear what the others have to say. But a quote that somebody gave me, what, "Fear is a misuse of the imagination." It's a misuse of the imagination. So the flip side of that is also true. Whereas visualization and positivity is an appropriate use. And the brain has no sense of humor. It doesn't have any delete button. It doesn't know the difference between a perceived threat or a real threat.
That's right.
If you think Sabre Two Tigers is going to come around the corner, your brain is going to drop some adrenaline, is going to drop some cortisol, and you're going to get ready to be out. So if you can flip that, and I can remember getting drafted or my wedding day or the birth of my first kids or something that I dream about or aspire to or want to become that's in the near future, my brain also responds accordingly. And then I start to get some feel-good things that take place, and that's a way to shift. So affirmations is talking to myself instead of listening to myself more. And visualization is about creating the reality that we want to see. We have so much information that's coming in that our brain has to become efficient. So it creates this cone of focus. So if I'm focusing on the negative, I'm gonna see more negative. But if I'm focused on the positive, I'm gonna tend to see more positive. Because we don't see the world as it is, we see the world as we are and what we focus on. So the heart of what, the crux of all my mental wellness that I do is merely a shift of my perspective and focus from what I'm afraid of, from what I lack, from what I fear, from what I feel guilty about, from what I feel shameful for, to what I want, to what I have, to what I have to offer. And I've found for me that when I'm able to do that, and that takes effort, it takes as much effort as putting the dumbbells up off the bar and keeping that thing off my chest. But if I'm willing to do that over periods of time, I significantly have improved my quality of life by shifting where I was focused because that's the reality that we create.
Wow, just a lot of powerful stuff there. And I want to add in that you put the research behind this important strategy for mental health. You gave us all the brain science. So we're going to add researcher to your title as well.
I like some TED Talks now.
So Jason, Mr. Wooden, in your practice in life coaching, I'm sure this probably is a strategy that you use. Talk a little bit about how you utilize this and what have you seen as a result of this work?
Yeah, it's hard to come behind Aaron with that right there. I'm gonna try to keep it simple. But just helping with the positive thinking patterns, taking that negativity and just really helping them focus on gaining the confidence. Somebody tells you, you know, I could see you lost some weight or, you know, hey, I see you, you know, I see your jump shot, you know, looks nice, you know, whatever. Like it just kind of instills that motivation for you to do better. So the affirmations are very powerful. And especially like in life coaching, a lot of people come to me to kind of help with the confidence in being able to do things. So the affirmation is very necessary. And with the visualization, a lot of times, like if I have, let's just say, young kids who are struggling with like outbursts, anger, just struggling with emotional regulation, to be able to kind of have a mental rehearsal and walk through what that looks like of how we're going to calm down and how we're gonna, you know, react to that and have them verbalize exactly what they're going to do. That kind of helps reduce, you know, that, how magnified that outburst can be because they already know exactly what I need to do in order to, you know, be able to work through this moment. So the visualization is key to, you know, helping a lot of them with the self-regulation and dealing with the, you know, managing their anger and just having episodes.
Yeah, you know, I said on the front end, this was an All-Star panel, and y'all are like knocking it out of the park because I'm getting so many nuggets from here. And what I heard you say, Jason, was that gaining that confidence really is about self-efficacy. And so because the work of change is that it has to start with me and I do the work and I have to be empowered in a way to do it. So being able to have that visualization really helps with building efficacy as well, right? And then the mental rehearsal just creates that safety. It's like, I feel more comfortable because I've seen it and now I feel like I can do it. So really great nuggets there. Randall, what would you add to that?
I would add focus, attention, time, effort.
That spells fate, by the way.
I caught that.
There you go.
But powerful information from both gentlemen. I would say, you know, with the positive affirmation, and that's a fantastic practice that Dr. Taylor's doing as far as that recording his voice and giving positive affirmations. But I would add that, you know, for some people, you know, you have to start with baby steps in that because first you're looking at a person's core beliefs, right? And people have core beliefs based on experiences, based on maybe aces, which we'll get into in a moment. But they have certain core beliefs that have to be maybe adjusted or changed. So you have to kind of take those small steps to approach that, you know. People have to feel like, you know, their physiological needs are met, their safety needs are met. You know, they feel loved, they belong, you know, then they get to that esteem part and then they can make it to that self-actualization where they can start speaking, you know, life into themselves, so to speak, and receiving that from other people as well. And then that visualization piece is the same really because, you know, when I think about myself and I think about, you know, self-talk, for example, you know, your negative self-talk can far outweigh your positive self-talk. And if you allow it to, you know, it'll cause you to have certain doubts and fears and all sorts of things. So, you know, it starts definitely internally, as Mr. Taylor was saying. But once we can adjust that, so once we can adjust core belief, core thoughts, focus on, you know, what those are, you know, how are you receiving those? What's real, you know, what's real and what do you think is going to happen? And what's really going to happen, things like that. So you approach that kind of in baby steps and then you just build on that. And you can bring them toward that, you know, that positive affirmation, that visualization and being able to receive that, speak it to themselves as well as receive it externally, you know. And once that happens, you know, there's nothing that can stop them. So, you know, and going back also, the, you know, the positive thoughts, positive affirmation, self-talk, you know, is creating those new clusters in the brain as Dr. Taylor touched on. Those clusters in the brain with all the positive thoughts. So it is shifting. Neurons are firing, you know, there's dopamine, there's serotonin, there's oxytocin. All of that is happening when that positivity takes over. And again, he mentioned it earlier, you know, it starts to build those new clusters and it overtakes some of those negative thoughts. So it's a work in progress, you know, but focus, attention, time, effort will get you there.
We got it. If you don't have it by now, it's focus, attention, time, and effort. And we've heard that over and over again. And I really appreciate you raising this thought about we have to meet... about we have to meet our partners in therapy, that I call them, and we call them clients as interchangeably, where they are. Some people are ready to dive into that, some people may have extensive trauma, that we have to do some body work first and let them feel safe in their body before we can get to the, to the, to the brain part of the work, right? To the, to the mental and psychological part of the work. So that's an important piece, um, to bring into the conversation. Melissa, how does this show up in your practice? And when do you use this? How do you see this working?
So first of all, thank you for repeating those, cuz I had the focus and attention. I needed those other two, so thank you for that. Um, I think a couple of things, just to add on to what everybody else has said, is that, yeah, equipping, seeing where the clients are at, and then filling their toolbox and giving them those tools and practicing those tools. Um, a couple of things, not so much with visualization, but with the positive affirmations, um, with my teenagers and my younger clients, um, putting it that they get stuck on that channel, right? It's like you have a remote, let's change the channel, and really practicing it with them. And then I always call it the best friend test, cuz we can be really cruel to ourselves, but we would never in a million years say some of the things that we say to ourselves to our best friends or our loved ones. And that clicks with some teenagers. And so giving them those tools, um, just to help them, cuz, oh, we can be mean to ourselves, um, and trying to get them to identify. And then breathing, that's my other, I don't have visualization, but I've noticed incorporating deep breathing at the beginning of my sessions to bring them focused and kinda ground them. And then at the end of the session, that's doing some really good work, um, with my teens and young adults.
Yeah, thank you for that. So the toolbox, you know, we gotta fill it up, and it's different things and with different folks. And I think that's so important to mention here, that visualization and affirmations are one strategy within that toolbox. And you may have to filter around with a lot of different things and then pull that out, or you might pull it out first and then get to some other tools later. But it just depends on where that client is. We talked a little bit about, um, just for a second here, about, um, meeting clients where they are, and there may be some clients who have some deeper rooted trauma that may need to work through before we get to using particular strategies. So as we think about Aces, which is adverse childhood experiences, um, I wanted to start with you, Randall, on this one. And incidentally, EFOs did a town hall webinar on this last April, April 2021, I believe it is. So there's a whole webinar to understand what adverse childhood experiences is. But as we know, these are traumatic events that occur in childhood that have significant risk factors that are built into them long-term. Um, so Randall, talk a little bit about Aces and their impact on mental health, and especially as it relates to students, cuz I wanna kinda bring in a little bit more of this student and schools piece in the conversation.
Okay, absolutely. Well, Aces play a ma, I mean, a major factor. A lot of times, well, you know, we don't know the extent of the background of the situation really happened today. However, you know, in most cases, this child or student or adult, whomever, has experienced some Aces. Uh, and whether, and it's said, it's researched, that if you experience more than, I believe it's at least four or five, um, then it becomes really severe and you will challenge some really, uh, struggles and challenges with mental health in your future. And so, uh, in working with students, you know, you see it often, uh, it plays out in different formats, uh, whether it's behavior, whether there's disruption, whether there's opposition, whatever it may be. Um, and sometimes we get, we get lost in focusing on what that action is they did, rather than, you know, taking a second to take a step back and say, okay, you know, maybe this student, maybe this person has experienced some of these Aces, um, and maybe they just recently did, you know, you just, you never know. But you wanna take the time to focus in on that and realize that, you know, that could be something that's causing behaviors that you're seeing. Um, and then when you do realize that, then maybe, you know, whatever, whoever the person is that notices it doing the work, or maybe referring, uh, that student to get, to get more help and more assistance. Um, but, but it plays out, you know, illnesses and different abuses, substance abuse, um, just an adverse, uh, wide range of different ways that it plays out. And I think, um, I think it's safe to say that, uh, and Dr. Taylor mentioned this earlier, that worldwide, you know, I think all of our children have experienced, uh, or have at least one ace now with the pandemic, and how it has impacted everyone around, you know, students, adults, their parents, and so forth. So, um, I think we have that one thing in common. So I think we really have to make sure that we're not only giving our students grace, but adults' grace and everyone that we, uh, we face, you know, we work with, we, 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 uh, we are, or driving next to when they cut us off, you know, it's just, there's so many things that play into that. So anyhow, I'll say that that's about it, but, uh, it's huge. You know, it's a huge thing in education where we see it, um, it's prevalent, and we just try to address it as best we can with support.
Yeah, good stuff. I really like how you centered the looking behind the behavior. We call that chasing the Y, that's Dan Siegel and Tina Payne Bryce's work. We do that a lot with teachers in training, right, to get them to look beyond the behavior and start having those questions, I wonder why that's happened, when did it start, those kinds of things? Jason, can you add just a little bit to that? Because I know with you being 12 years of counselor and 20 years in education, I know you've seen it quite a bit yourself. Come off a mute for us if you don't mind. I told you we would all get at least one.
Oh, I was saying that, you know, unfortunately, they come to the office a lot of times for some kind of behavior issue, and, you know, yes, we have to issue a consequence, but, you know, we definitely have to take the time to just kinda stop and just, you know, get to know the kid, build a connection with the kid, and dig a little deeper and, and find out a little more about their situation. Did something happen today, you know, that started your day off wrong? Or, you know, you, all the Aces play a major part. But I think the adults just really, really have to be mindful and have to take the initiative and take the, um, just, just want to get to know the kid and try to dig a little deeper versus just, you know, every interaction being negative with them, you know? Uh, and when you do have an opportunity to see the kid later on, speak to the kid, uh, see how their day is going, and try to build a rapport with that kid. And it's just, you know, it's just important for the adults to be intentional with making those relationships with those kids to, you know, try and help just foster the sense of community in the school, them feeling safe, try to reduce the, the different kind of behaviors that they're having. I mean, it just, it takes more than just sitting, asking them what happened, give them a consequence. You really have to build those connections with those kids and be willing to go a little deeper with the kids.
Yeah, you, uh, you hit the foundational piece, was relationship and having conversation and connecting beyond the behavior and connecting in other times when those behaviors aren't present to build that relationship with them and create that safe space. So important. Melissa, um, you have a significant experience and history with, um, violence against children and families, and you've worked in, in, um, in that space for a long time. And so I know that's part of, you know, having abuse and, um, domestic violence and physical, sexual, emotional abuse pops up. And I know you see that a lot in your practice. So how do the Aces show up in your clinical and therapeutic work?
I think I see a mix of things. I see some people who are familiar with the concept and the questionnaire, and sometimes they see it's a good starting off point, and then I see sometimes people take it a little too far, but I think it's a good starting off point. I think it helps, I notice this a lot in Parkland, um, that children would come in to see me, and they would feel like they were the only one that something traumatic had happened to, and that they're the only ones that were coming, was coming to see me. And they would see, like their shoulders would lift and, or relax, I guess, and they would just have a smile on their face when they saw another child in that waiting room to let them know that they weren't alone during this. Um, and I don't see this much now, cuz I'm on telehealth for the most part. Um, but I think just knowing that they're not alone, that other people have gone through similar things. Um, but yeah, the Aces, it's powerful, it has some flaws, but it's really powerful. Um, TED Talks, speaking of TED Talks, um, Dr. Nadine Burke Harris, um, her TED Talk is one of my favorite things. I learn something from that every single time I watch it. So, um, it's an important issue, so.
Yeah, I think that's part of reducing the stigma is knowing that you're not the only one in that, raising that awareness and ensuring that kids know that, and parents too, cuz that's, that's a hard piece as well when you're raising a kid that has these issues. And you can also feel like you're the only parent that's having this issue with your kids, and that's not the case. Dr. Taylor, cuz we upgraded you tonight, you were Dr. Taylor on the panel from this point on. You know, I'm curious about, we had, um, the conversation before with a couple of athletes about Aces, and they weren't familiar with it, and they thought, man, if I had known about Aces and understanding some interventions around it, I might've been in a different place in my career. So in this sports space, in this athlete's space, how much do you see Aces play itself out in, um, in, in games and just in conversations with athletes that you have and in other contexts that you're working in?
Well, I mean, we all walking around with our, uh, with our experience and our childhood and causes and conditions and, and all of that. So the locker room was, you know, ripe with, you know, all of us wounded men that were out there that, you know, had issues from a variety of things that had an outlet for it. So where it becomes challenging is when you get done doing that, how do you process your emotion? How do you have anger? You knock somebody out, you know, on third and 10 in the middle of the supermarket, you probably going to jail, but, you know, in a football context, you had this healthy release of aggression, you had consistency, you had a locker room where inherently everybody understood what it was you were doing. But what's interesting is that the locker room was a sacred place, but it wasn't necessarily a safe place. So we, we learned to wear our game faces and have our masks on, if you will. So my childhood Aces looked like divorced parents at two years old, sexual and physical abuse at five, abandonment at eight years old with no dad in the picture. I'm biracial, so I've never felt black enough, I've never felt white enough, I felt too black, I felt too white. Just for, to spice it up a little bit, we moved every two years from the time I was in fourth grade till I graduated high school for one reason or another. So it was new friends, new school, new teachers, new rules, new everything. So I learned how to perform and fit in and learn how to adapt into my environments, but also grew up in a household with a single parent who was a loving mom, but was very codependent. And if you rubbed her the wrong way, you got sent away. My sister got sent away, my dad got sent away, and I got sent away. And so when I got sent away, bad things happened. That's when the abuse took place. So I learned as an eight-year-old, oh, I better make the people around me happy, particularly the women, because if I don't, I'm gonna be in pain. So I'm 49 years old now, I'm a college football Hall of Famer, I won a Super Bowl, I've been married to my wife for 14 years, she's my best friend, and we have a great marriage, but I still, at this age, solve for safety. So the way that that looks is I'm always looking for ways to make sure she has what she needs or insert myself in my value, because those are the old habits that I learned to be able to show up with. So much of this is subconscious, and I had a situation, I'll tell you really quickly, her birthday, she came to me, she said, hey, I got this present, or can you get me a present? I know birthdays aren't a big deal to you, but they are to me, baby. I said, I got you. So I went and got this present, but I didn't have time to wrap it. I sent her a text and said, hey, let me wrap this present real quick, and I'll call you in, and we can give it to you when it's all clear. So she drives up the driveway a couple minutes after that and walks right to the room. I'm like, what are you, what are you doing? I just sent you a text, like, why would you do that? She's like, what, what? And I got pissed. And at first I was wounded because I didn't get a chance to be the hero, and that's what really was underneath it, right? So even when it was about her, it wasn't about her, it was really about me feeling safe. So that's the way that my Aces still show up. Turns out she never, ever saw the text. So I made up this whole story, this big old association machine, that, uh-oh, you didn't get the present, you don't get to be the hero, there's not confetti and horns, then your wife's gonna be unhappy, and if she's unhappy, she's gonna leave, or you're gonna get sent away and bad things gonna happen. I don't even think about that, it happens naturally. So I've had to learn between the thought and the chemical release to take that pause so that I can learn how to respond versus react. One of the ways that I've learned to respond is through self-hypnosis and meditation. And I went from being a nine in that moment like this to being back down to a three, which is where my baseline is in 22 minutes. And for me, that toolbox that you guys are mentioning, there's a ton of tools that I use. And we are powerless over lots of things, but our happiness and our well-being does not have to be one of them, but it takes focus, attention, time, and effort. I swear, I have trialed and erred everything that is out there, but I finally have five or six things that are my go-to that when I get activated, I can bring it down pretty quickly, because I can't control the first thought and the association, but I can control how I respond to that thought. And it's that difference between the nine and the three that has led to a life that I wouldn't change for anybody. I can't change what happened to me as a kid, but I can change how I respond and enjoy the world based on what happened to it, by how I move forward. But I have to have the tools necessary, I have to be courageous, I have to be willing, and with help with licensed clinicians like yourself, I'm not a doctor, I didn't even sleep in a Holiday Inn last night, with that encouragement, we can take steps where all of us can improve situations that feel overwhelming and can lessen unhappiness that seems too great. That's possible, I'm living proof of that. It varies for a lot of different reasons for all of us, but it's important for people to know that our life experience is something that largely we can control. And how we experience life, five years, five months, five minutes from now, is something we can choose. But for that to take place, we have to change the way that we think. And that's where people like you come in, where you can teach these tools so that people can start to take back the happiness that we put on hold for so long.
Wow, first of all, let me just say, I so appreciate you sharing your own story, because I think that's one of the ways that we help to reduce the stigma, is that we're looking at you, a Super Bowl champion, a Hall of Famer, um, someone who has been through so much in your own childhood experience, but you helped elevate the fact that, um, Aces is not a license. That there is opportunity to live and have great mental health, strong mental health, positive mental health. And we do that by connecting into these resources, um, understanding how to build awareness, because self-awareness is so key, and you spoke to that. Um, and then where we're, where it's possible, connecting in with a therapist. And so that kind of really segues us into this next question I have. And I know we got some questions from, uh, Mr. Ford, you wanted to comment on that? I see your hand raised, did you raise your hand on it?
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to add, Mr. Aaron said, um, he mentioned, um, that, you know, he mentioned the toolbox, and I think he made a huge point and explained that he found the five that works for him, but he tried several. And I think sometimes we get caught up in this one didn't work, this one didn't work, this one didn't work. So this whole mental health thing does not work, you know? Um, and so I think that's a huge point, um, in, in getting people to understand that it takes time, it takes that effort, and you just really have to focus in on, on trying different things that work for you specifically, uh, because everybody has different experiences. But there's just like a toolkit of things out there that, you know, once you put together what works for you, it is life-changing. So I'm glad you brought that point up, Mr. Taylor, but I just wanted to kinda hone in on that, because that's huge, because I hear that from students, that I tried this, I tried that, I tried this. And then they just, you know, they wanna give up, but you just have to keep trying. And another thing, the powerful thing, is connecting with a person is when you do share your own story. And that's when they do feel comfortable enough to come or to seek help. Uh, but if we don't ever, if we don't ever share our own stories and speak up on that, then again, that leads people to think that they're on their own and what they're going through. So great, great comments, powerful things.
Appreciate that. And I, um, you know, definitely wanna say, just reiterate what you said, Randall, is that we don't give up. If that one thing doesn't happen, keep pushing through. And I think that's where the resilience that you talked about, Dr. Taylor, really comes into play, that resilience and being able to continue to positively affirm your Dr. Taylor, really comes into play, that resilience and being able to continue to positively affirm your, uh, journey and your path. This is a great segue and we're getting close to our time, but I want to spend just a little bit of time on a pair of questions. So I'm gonna pose them together. So what are some key takeaways that families can do to improve their mental health? So what are some, just some basic general strategies for improving your overall mental health? And then the second part of that is where can families go to get that help and support? Because if they're going to have that quality of life and really be able to reverse some of those factors about Aces that come into their lives that, that Erin talked about, where can they go to get that and what should they do? So I'm gonna start with you, Melissa, on this one. And, uh, tell us a little bit about what some strategies are that will be useful for takeaways.
Um, two things I would say, because we've talked about a lot of things. Well, one, I think I'm a therapist, so I think everybody should go to therapy. Um, but sleep, I think we haven't touched on that and that, we could talk all day long about that. So sleep, um, and for parents and for adults who are in children and teens' life, they're watching. And so you need to take care of yourself, just like when on the airplane and they say, put your mask on first. You have to figure out what works for you, practice it, and then role model that for those who are watching you, because they're always watching. And so just make it a conversation and within, within the family, and that's a good thing. Um, finding help, we are lucky to be in DFW because there are lots of resources. Um, so we've agencies, there are some long waiting lists right now. Some people go to their churches, some people go to their insurance panels, but it's a lot. There are some waiting lists, but there are a lot of people out there who want to help. And so it's just about taking that step to get the help. So.
So I, I just have to say, the, the sleep piece is so completely a big part of this. The physical health that goes with the mental health. And we see a lot of factors that can be solved for, by just more sleep. And I think that speaks to, uh, we probably won't get to it today, but that speaks to some of the social media usage, where there's a lot of time spent on social media and that affects sleep because of the light, just because of all the scrolling, the different content. And so we see a lot of kids particularly who are really challenged in managing their emotions and reactions because they are tired. And if we could just address that, we could address a lot of other, um, phases of mental health. Uh, let me jump to you, Jason, on this next one. So what do you, how do you encourage families, um, to get care for their mental health? And what strategies would you encourage them to take on?
Um, you definitely hit big with the social media usage is to, you know, pull back on, reduce that. Um, and then also just the amount of toxic things that you watch, being around toxic people. If you can kind of eliminate some of that out of your life, um, and then I'm big on expressing gratitude and just, just practicing it, you know? I think that kind of helps, you know, ground you and, um, just help you be a better version or be the best version of yourself. Always strive to, to work on that and be open to, uh, um, being, being accountable, holding yourself accountable and wanting to, to grow and do better. And just know that there's always room for improvement. So whether you go for counseling or you go to group counseling or, you know, you are, uh, willing to read a book or watch some kind of TV show that has, you know, like I'm, I'm big on watching a lot of, uh, shows that have counseling in it, buried at first sight to, um, Ayala Fix My Life, all of that stuff. So, um, just, just be willing to just always be a better version of yourself and go get help if you feel like you, you need help. So I don't know if you guys can hear all that thunder and lightning in the background.
Yeah.
Exactly. Acting up over here. Uh, and then just, uh, like, it's Melissa, right? Uh, just using your community resources, churches, uh, um, the school district has tons of them. Uh, each campus should have plenty of referrals and, uh, Google, Google has everything. So, um, those would be the, the main resources, uh, way to get your resources.
Awesome. Um, I just want to mention that what you talked about, Jason, was these are things that are free. They don't cost you to go to therapy, right? So working on sleep, going to bed at different times, that's free. You don't have to pay for that and that's gonna help a whole lot. Um, you know, thinking about how you practice gratitude, whether it's keeping a gratitude journal or jar, free. You don't have to pay for that. These are things that we know for a fact, um, help our brains as we begin to think about how we want to respond to things differently, but these are free, um, strategies to use. I also want to say that just in your search, when you're Google searching and all of that, if you want to look up a particular therapist or a particular group, you want to make sure that they're a reputable group. That's part of what mental health awareness is about, is putting factual information out there. And so, um, definitely if you're looking up someone that you're thinking about going to therapy for, there are licensing boards where you can go and check out their name and see if they are licensed, because we're seeing a lot of influencers and people who are not mental health professionals talking about mental health. I want to throw that in because we're not gonna get, talk about social media tonight, but let's make sure we're getting information from credible sources, um, particularly if we're going to go to therapy or if we're gonna do life coaching, that we can check out those individuals and make sure that, um, they can give us that factual information. Um, Dr. Taylor, what would you encourage? You shared a lot in, in your last, um, piece about what has helped you. Is there anything else that you say, here are some additional tools or strategies that I think would be helpful? And here's where you might think about going for additional support?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna plug myself real quickly. Uh, my wife in her infinite wisdom, about three or four years ago, got the URL mentalhealthbestpractices.com. In the next two weeks, it's gonna be an agnostic meeting. You know, anybody's come, anybody is welcome. I'm not pitching anything. There's nothing to be sold. It is merely offering many of these resources that we're talking about. So people can come, look for what's theirs, leave the rest and start their process, either begin it or continue their own journey to mental wellness. Charge your cell phone in a different room. I had to do that because when it was by my bed, I would start checking and I would get on the treadmill. It was at ten miles an hour and ten degrees before I got out of bed. And if I got the wrong email, my whole day was tainted. Uh, shifting my focus, I had a chance to do an NFL game this year. It was the biggest opportunity. I looked at my wife, I said, I'll see you in a week. Deuces, I'm about to go into the rabbit hole. I started getting tight, was gonna work my way. She said, are you open to a suggestion? I said, yeah. She's like, every time you get nervous about what it is you want to do, shift your focus with visualization to how you want to feel after the game. I had the best game I've ever had that was on the NFL and I had the best season I've ever had by focusing on how I wanted to feel after the game. And I closed my eyes and I visualized, put my game board and my computer into my bag, who I was gonna call, who texted me, what it said, what my call to my wife was gonna be like, what the look on my face is as I went to bed and turned the light off in the hotel before I went to the airport the next morning. Every time I got nervous, I shifted that and that was an appropriate use of the information. We do family circle in my house. This started during COVID. One thing you're proud of, one thing you're thankful for. Everybody goes around, you could do it a whip around. You could do one thing you respect, admire, appreciate, where everybody in the family talks about that one person. I really appreciate the way that you always show up on time or clean your room. Those are the dialogue starters that you don't have to go to a therapist to pay for. It just gets what's on the inside, on the outside, asking, how can we support you? Who's got a problem? Who needs some help? I need a truck, man. I need to move. Okay, I could help you. Uh, courtesy is the gateway to serenity. If I'm feeling bad about what's going on in my world, I hold the door open for somebody. I give a parking space to somebody and I don't know when I'll feel better. But when I do, I'll look back and it'll started when I started focus, stopped focusing on myself and made it about other people. The courtesy is the gateway to serenity. Um, what else did I have down there? There's a, a ton. There's a million things. Affirmations work for me, but the key is, it's not, it, this is what I do for me. The question is, what are you doing for you? If you want to get strong, you can bench press, dumbbells, do pushups. It don't matter. If you want to get your chest strong, you gotta do something. You could do Tabata, you could do Zumba. You could ride the bike, you could swim. It don't matter. If you want to lose weight and get in shape, there's a million different things for you to do. Find what works for you, because there are a ton of things out there. And we are powerless over lots of things, but our happiness and our wellbeing does not have to be one of them. And it doesn't cost a dime in most cases to begin and start to improve that process. Talk therapy is hugely valuable. I got several hundred sessions underneath my belt from the time that I was nineteen years old in college, going to the Health Center. It's extremely valuable and there are things that we can do in addition to seeing a licensed clinician that's a mental health specialist to improve the quality of our lives. That light at the end of the tunnel does not have to be a train. It can be salvation if we're willing to put in the focus, attention, time and effort. Find what's yours and go get it.
Uh, you know, so when I, I've written that down about three or four times and the acronym is FATE. So I don't know if, if everybody else has figured that out enough that I'm, I'm slowing on the bus tonight, but I'm like, wow, you know, just your destiny and your direction. If you incorporate those four things, it lifts you to that. Uh, before I get to Randall, let me just say the chat is blowing up and I just want to read some of what's in there. Um, hard to be depressed when you practice gratitude. Um, thanks, Michael, for that. And then also earlier, when you were talking, Erin, about just, you can't control the things that happen to you, but you can, you can control how you respond to them. You have a choice in the matter. And so we make healthier choices when we have more healthy mental health. So, um, that also came in from the chat. And so just really a lot of appreciation for what you all are sharing. And I do want to say, if you all don't mind providing these resources, post this webinar, we can keep those at Ethos so that when people reach out and contact Ethos, we have a resource toolbox, um, to provide for them. So, um, Randall, talk a little bit about how you would advise families via strategies. And I can hear lightning somewhere. I know it's, it's storming, it's storming over here too. So, um, so go ahead and, and share a little bit around that.
Um, and Dr. Dr. Taylor said it all, you know, I, I don't know what to say, but, um, I will say, um, you know, everything that he mentioned, um, just remembering the focus on you, you know, it's not about copying what someone else does. It's about finding what works for you. Um, a couple of things I was reading a while back, you know, it stuck with me. One was kindness replaces blame and that goes for, that's external and internal. And then, um, conversation replaces distance. And that one stuck with me because of so much isolation that took place and the fear of getting out there and, uh, reacting or, or interacting with people. Uh, so those are two things that stuck with me. Um, you know, as a rule, less is more. Um, another thing, success, the thing about success, we want to base our, our, um, accomplishments and our success on every, what everybody else thinks, you know? And we need to tailor that down to our small circle of family and close friends and then, uh, allow them to let us know, you know, what success is for us or explain or share when they've seen we've been successful. And that's, that's when it's most important. Um, just making sure we communicate, you know, continue to communicate. Uh, we do a, uh, family meeting as well. We call it, um, we do it separately with our kids, our two kids. We call them business meetings because they think that makes them feel, you know, more important. But it's really just dialogue about, around them, you know, how things going, what they're feeling, sharing their feelings, being open. Um, and then at a different time, we'll bring the entire family together and we do the same thing, give some compliments, you know? Um, say what, what I saw you do that was great or, or share, share when there's, uh, when there's an issue, you know, when there's a struggle, when there's something you want to put on the table. Um, we even open it up to us. If you see, you know, with parents, what are we doing? If you see something that we're doing, share it, you know, so that we can look at it, we can analyze it, we can break it down. Uh, and that just gives people voice, you know, that gives, starting at home, it gives them safety, uh, to express voice and then they can do it outward. Um, um, and that just, just that time alone, you know, that, that time is just security and safety in itself. Uh, and just being able to be there and be present with each other with everything turned off. Um, you know, no phones in the room when you go to sleep, things like that, that allow you to actually get that rest that you were speaking about earlier, you know, that seven or eight hours of, of good sleep, um, so that you can be prepared for the next day and just, you know, waking up the next day and, and looking at yourself in the mirror and just telling yourself, you got this, uh, regardless of what comes, you know? Just, um, so those are, those are just some of the things that, um, um, that I'm, that I share with students, share with my kids, uh, my wife and myself, when I'm looking in the mirror, because sometimes you wake up and it's like, you know, here we go. But then you gotta, you know, you brush certain things off and, um, um, I'm gonna steal that from Dr. Dr. Taylor. I'm gonna record my voice, you know, and talk to it. I don't know, I may record my kid's voice and try that too. That might help too, because that, that's your inspiration right there, you know, that's what pushes you. So I like that, Dr. Taylor. So, um, but that's what I would say. Just, um, you know, just keep going, you know, there, there, there are all sorts of resources out there. Just, you know, communicate, don't be afraid to ask and, and realize you're not alone. You're not alone. You're not alone. And I think, you know, if we look around and we see what's going on, I think people are starting to realize more that they're not alone, you know? So that's what I would say.
Thank y'all so much. I want to just, um, shout out one of the comments in the chat, um, from Tony. Uh, we overcome by the word of our testimony, such a powerful word from the word. So thank you for putting that in the mix. Well, listen, we are out of time, but before we close out, because this has been literally like the Super Bowl of panels. Like this is just so important. Um, everybody on here is sharing from their doctor hat. And I've been thrilled, again, privileged really just to kind of sit with y'all and hear all of these valuable nuggets. And I know the audiences will, um, that listen to this, different groups that listen to it, will pull something away. I would like for each of you to take thirty seconds as a parting, um, statement to just share what's on your heart to share with someone and maybe it's something personal, like you know people that are struggling right now. You know what's happening. When we get off this webinar, we're gonna turn on the TV. We know what we're gonna see. So if you just take thirty seconds to just make a, a final statement or whatever is on your heart to share, and then we'll wrap up with that. And I'm gonna start with Jason on this one going out.
Um, man, when my feet touch the floor, it's gonna be a good day. And, you know, no matter, no matter what, I woke up and, and, you know, whatever the day has in store for me, I just try to remain, you know, grateful, humble, keep a positive outlook. And, um, I, I put it on myself to make sure that I, you know, that I have a great day. It's, you know, like some of you guys have said, it's, you know, what I have the ability to do to, you know, change the situation or however I look at life or, you know? Uh, but that's the biggest thing for me is when I wake up, it's just, let's go, let's get it. And I just start off my day with positive affirmation and just positive outlook. And, uh, I always just remember that, you know, there's somebody out there that would love to trade, uh, trade my day with me, you know, so they could have a, a better day. So I try to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Randall, what's your last statement for our audience?
Uh, one would be just seek balance, you know, seek balance. Um, try your best to, to find balance and, uh, and all the things, all the things that are coming at you. All the positives and negatives, the, the, the task, whatever it may be, uh, seek balance, uh, in that. And, um, it was mentioned earlier, but I would say, look to serve someone else, because then you're looking, you're spending some time looking outward rather than inward. So look to serve, uh, someone else. So balance and look to serve someone else. And, um, that is one thing that will change or help to change, uh, your mental capacity.
Thank you. Good stuff. Dr. Taylor?
Uh, the simplest way to change our lives is to change our minds. Um, there's a magic question that I use in the morning, you know, how will I experience joy today? How will I be inspired today? I wonder how I will be patient and tolerant and kind to my wife and kids today. When I do that, it primes my brain to look out for those opportunities and more of those things tend to happen when I start my day asking that magic open-ended question. Um, what I've come to realize in my life is that what I think and how I feel is not my fault. It's just my default. The way that my brain has evolutionarily designed to survive in this crazy world that no longer exists, but it's not my fault. It's just my default, but it is my responsibility to do something about it and I can change that. We are not stuck with the brains that we are given. We can change that and we can change our life experience if we're willing to put that focus, attention, time and effort. I think it's really important for everybody to understand what anyone can do, they can do. And I would strongly encourage them to start or continue their journey towards mental wellness.
Thank you so much. Um, Melissa, we'll close out with you. I've been sitting in the man cave today, so I'm gonna let you close out the conversation. If you come off of mute, because we definitely want to hear you.
I almost made it without being on mute. Um, I was saying earlier, I was like, could, um, to follow Dr. Taylor was really hard. So I was gonna be like, could you leave me a voice memo? Um, so I could listen to that every day. Um, but no, this, this, I think gratitude. Um, but no, this, this, I think gratitude, um, and yeah, it's all about your mindset and just to keep moving forward. And find on my desk that says, you got this, and just to have whatever works for you, to find it and keep practicing it. So, yeah.
Well, thank you all so much. There was so much shared. Um, I was writing furiously and didn't get it all, so I'll get a chance to watch this